Session of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners. Today, we are having a presentation of the Corporation for Supportive Housing Summary Report and Recommendations for Supportive Housing Case Management. As with all of our work sessions, this is for informational purposes only. We do not take public comment in our work sessions. If you'd like to provide public comment, you're welcome to attend our 5:30 business meeting and share with us your thoughts during public comment. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jill.
Thank you, Commissioners. I wanted to, before I introduced Terry Power with the Corporation for Supportive Housing and let her present the information from that's in the report that you received, I did just want to frame this up, the context of the work that Terry performed on our behalf. It is one of the strategies that was developed as part of the Supportive Housing Strategic Plan. And that's part of the larger Douglas County, City of Lawrence, Douglas County Strategic Plan to address housing and homelessness in our community. We got a head start on operationalizing some of our strategies in the Supportive Housing Work Group. Supportive Housing Work Group meets on a monthly basis. And we have some representatives of that work group that are here with us today, and we may have some some others joining us online and in person. But one of our strategies in that strategic plan is to establish a community supportive housing case management program based on evidence-based practices. We don't have shared agreement on what that looks like in this community, and that's one of the things that Terry outlines in her work, but she, you know, in better, in order to better understand that and what it looks like in the different organizations in our community, we knew we needed to spend some time with all the organizations that do supportive housing or supportive housing adjacent services in some way, shape, or form. So you're going to hear from Terry about what she heard from the different providers and, you know, kind of overlay that in terms of what that looks like with evidence-based practices and in other communities around the country. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to you, Terry.
All right. Thank you. That was a great summary of what I did, and I will just follow up on that, just wanting to make sure everyone can hear me okay. We good? All right. Great. Thank you for that. So thank you and good afternoon, Commissioners Kelly Reed and Willie. I am really glad to be here. Hope I didn't say any of your names incorrectly, but thank you for inviting me. I'm really happy to share my responses and recommendations with all of you. But before I do that, a little bit about CSH and a little bit about who I am. CSH, we go by CSH because Corporation for Supportive Housing is long. No one quite remembers it. But we are a national nonprofit. We are headquartered in New York City, but we are in almost every state. And our mission is to promote supportive housing, to impact the lives of individual and vulnerable people, and to impact communities and improve communities. We do this through, through four lines of business, lending, training, technical assistance, and advocacy. So what we did in Douglas County is under the umbrella of technical assistance and training. I am the Associate Director for the Ohio Office of CSH. I have been with CSH for about 10 and a half years. I am a licensed independent social worker, so mental health is my background, but I have been in housing for over 15 years now. It was kind of my second career. So happy to have been able to help here. One of the reasons that CSH pulled me into this project is because of my social work background and my ability to work with services and understand the importance of services to sustain people in supportive housing. So glad to be here. Just a little bit about CSH and who I am. I want to begin by saying that it was a great experience. I always learn whenever I go into new communities from what people are doing around, around the community, how you collaborate with each other, and I wanted to thank you for that experience. It was really a pleasure working with Jill, who's amazing, and really all of the partners around the Supportive Housing Work Group. I think that the county has a great place to start right now with these partners. I'm going to highlight, as Jill said, a little bit about how I got and gathered the information that I gathered around the Supportive Housing Work Group. And I'm going to just briefly give an overview of what the partner said about strengths, about challenges, what they think success would look like, the data they might want to collect, next steps, and then the training that needs that they, they said they had, and I added a little bit of my own as well. And including peers and people with lived experience. And then I'm going to highlight the recommendations that I came up with. So we'll, we'll start with the interviews around the Supportive Housing Work Group. The first thing I want to say is how eager, excited, committed the partners were around the table. And as I just mentioned, that is a great place to start. They may not have all had the same definition of supportive housing or where to go or how to get there, but the commitment was there, the goal of improving supportive housing, of decreasing the homelessness in your county was there. And that was very, very clear with everyone that I interviewed. And again, that's a great place to start with that motivation, that commitment and that passion to move this needle forward and to make an impact in your county on homelessness and housing. So it's a great place to start. So I'm going to highlight first the strengths and the challenges and a little bit about what the, they thought successes would look like. Again, high-level overview, not going into everything that everyone said. But in terms of the strengths, they did say the county was a really strong partner. They felt that you listened and you really helped and wanted to make the county a stronger county in terms of services around homelessness and housing. The partners participated, as I, as I mentioned, and they were present. They are present. They make this a priority. They come to meetings and they, and they really engage. There's a diversity of expertise around the table and in your Supportive Housing Work Group, which is really great. And you're, you have a strong reentry program with really great collaborative partners there. So that's a, that's also a great strength. In terms of challenges, as Jill said, there wasn't a shared definition of supportive housing or housing-based case management. In some cases, people were just unclear as to what it meant at all. And some others just had different definitions and different thoughts about it. So that's a challenge. There was no agreed-upon best practice on how to keep people in housing once they are housed. There's a lack of resources around services and housing, which of course is everywhere, not just in your community. There's also a lack of current housing stock, which again is everywhere, not just in your community. And I might add that post-COVID, it is far worse in many communities than it was pre-COVID. The current stock that you have in, in your county does have several restrictions and eligibility requirements and program requirements. And having only that stock of housing does leave the most vulnerable people behind and you, and communities tend to not make as big a dent in, in decreasing homelessness when you have only that one stock and one spectrum of housing. The individuals are leaving transitional housing because it is transitional with no permanent place to go. That's again, a challenge and of course, one of the reasons that we're here. And then there are several partners who said that you needed to add more people around your collaborative and in your work group. Some of those partners might be law enforcement or health centers or education, people with education, and of course, people with lived experience. We want to make sure their voice is heard in your work groups. And I just also want to point out that Black Indigenous and people of color who are not traditionally, the agencies that are not traditionally involved and included in this kind of collaborative really need to have a strategic force and target to, to include those in those agencies that are not normally included in this kind of collaborative. So make that perhaps a strategic point to do that. So being more inclusive. There's certainly some downside to having an unwieldy number of people in a group. But I also think that is outweighed by the ability to have a diversity of opinions and experience and expertise around the table. And the more, the more perspectives that you have, the, the better the product is going to be in the, in the end. So what success would look like to a lot of people, of course, it's having a spectrum of housing options, not having one specific type of housing, but having a spectrum, having a continuum of housing options that would meet the individual needs of many different kinds of the target population you're looking for. Have the collaborative partners have the ability to meet the needs of individuals, and we're going to talk about that in my recommendations in a minute. And have a unified direction and a shared goal was something that was very important to everyone in that work group and that they really wanted. If they did that, they really felt that they would be moving towards success. Ideas for next steps that came out was again, define and agreed-upon definition of supportive housing and housing-based case management. Develop a shared vision of what that spectrum of housing or that continuum of housing would look like. And increase service funding to support the needs of the individuals that are housed. So it's important that we think about not just housing people, but maintaining that housing. Supportive housing, of course, is that combination of rental assistance and services. You can't have one without the other. That is the importance of supportive housing. I have seen many supportive housing programs that admit people with many challenges who have been chronically homeless on the street, but they don't fully implement the case management and the services piece, and it has, it does not go well. These are, is this a challenging target population? And it is important that we have services that are sustained and that people are, that trained to, to work with, with this population. One of my pet peeves that I talk about wherever I go is that case managers should not be thrown into situations they are not prepared for. They need to be fully supported, fully supervised, and fully trained to be able to do their jobs well. And to, and to stay, we know case management turnover is really high, and that affects the morale of everyone, other staff and tenants. I've talked to tenants who have been in housing for, say, five years, and they've had three different case managers. Some of that you can't control, but happy staff, happy tenants, and it's a win-win for everyone. So developing that service model is going to be really, really important. And also the collaborative piece. CSH has a motto that we say supportive housing is not a solo act. So a case manager cannot be all things to, to their clients. So you need to have a collaborative, which is what's great about your work group, a collaborative partnership that, that can have resources that individuals need. So knowing what those resources are and being in that collaboration will be important. And then another next steps would be how to integrate peer specialists. So I talked about having people with lived experience around the work group, but also incorporating peer specialists in your case management team or your services team. And how to do that is going to be important as well. So we did also talk to a current group of tenants and just a couple of things about what they said. They also would like more housing options. They would also prefer their own apartment over living in a group situation where you had a room and then a shared kitchen and shared bathrooms. They preferred their own apartment over that group living situation. They also wanted housing that was safe. Safety and security was really important to them. And that was accessible to amenities, normal amenities that we would want to live close by. Grocery stores, churches, restaurants, bus stops. So it was important for them to live in apartments that were close to those amenities. And they also talked about the importance of having a comprehensive array of services so that they, their needs could be met as well. So that's what I heard from everyone. And I'll just move on to recommendations unless there's any comments or questions.
Okay. I think we're good right now. Terry, go ahead with the recommendations.
So there was two basic recommendations. They're, both recommendations had quite a bit to it. The first recommendation was to have two, two-day trainings slash facilitated meetings. The first two-day training, day one and day two would, would have six goals altogether. Day one goal would be to begin to build the trust around the work group. Just like anyone that we work with, you need to have that trust and that relationship built around the table. So a little bit of activities around that, making sure that everyone is being honest and having open communication. You also want to increase the knowledge of each other around the table. So you want to make sure that all the partners in the work group or in your collaborative know and understand what each other does. So a little bit of time spent on that. And while people are talking about what they do to each other, they really need to think about what role they will play in this work group moving forward. Then the third goal for that first day is to begin to establish that shared vision and those goals. What is your end product going to look like? And in agreeing to that, what that shared vision is. It's also while they're, while the, everyone is increasing their knowledge of the partners in the work group, that's also when you want to talk about who might be missing. Who do you want to include in that work group that might be missing to hear from everyone and then have an action plan for inviting those people? Day two of the first two days, the, has, has three goals as well. The first is an overview training on housing first, on supportive, on supportive housing in general, transitional housing, recovery housing, just a basic overview. We certainly can't get into a lot, but just to give the work group an overview of what each housing model looks like. Then start that plan. What do you have now in your community in terms of housing? And what do you need? So begin that, that building of that continuum or that spectrum of housing that partners have been talking about. And then the roles and responsibilities. Who's willing to do what? Who's going to come up, come to the table? Who's going to step forward? Who's, who around the table is going to be committed and what role in partnership are they going to play? So that's the first two days. The second two days, the day, what I call day three, has two goals. One is to do a little bit more intensive training on housing-based case management and supportive housing. Again, it's a general overview, but what does it mean? What does it look like? What are the components of it? Why is it important? What training does it take? What is needed to keep someone stably housed? And then to develop a training plan around the people who will be implementing those housing programs. Day four will have four goals, and that is that development of, of your shared philosophy around service delivery. What can everyone agree on that you want to have as a community, as a collaborative, your shared philosophy? A sustainability plan is really important. As I mentioned earlier, services must come with housing. So it's important to have a sustainability plan on how those services will be funded. I know that sounds a lot easier than, than it is, but there just at least some discussion around how we can, how we may be able to do that. Some behavioral health organizations are Medicaid-funded. That's, that could be one alternative that you can lean on. Also, eviction, sorry.
Sorry, Terry, can I ask you a question? Says Commissioner Willie. So within that four-day session, can there also be a discussion of what resources are available statewide, nationwide? Because I know there are resources out there, and it might, might be nice when we have all the partners together to kind of talk about what the options are for, for outside funding and who might be able to apply for that and kind of divvy that up in terms of the labor to draw dollars into the community to help with this.
Yeah, absolutely. Great, thank you. And then developing an eviction prevention philosophy and protocol. I have seen counties and communities work within their continuum of care that as a community, they have an eviction prevention protocol. So before someone is, is let go of a program, they come together and talk about it. So developing that kind of a, of a program and protocol. And then at the end of those four days, that fourth day, having an action plan, looking at it in terms of your, yours, the county's strategic plan, making sure it's in compliance with that. It follows what the county's priorities are in terms of housing and homelessness, and developing a concrete action plan with timelines, roles and responsibilities, and, and, and action steps at the end of that, of those days. Second recommendation has six components. And that would be, so after the action plan is developed, developing monthly meetings. And I know this sounds very time-intensive and a lot of work, but embarking on a strategic plan to really make an impact in your community on decreasing homelessness does take a lot of work and it takes a lot of collaboration. And hopefully, it will also energize people to really want to be committed and work hard at, at doing this. So monthly meetings, and I would also recommend having some subcommittees. Sometimes things get done more quickly when there's smaller numbers of people involved if they have a very specific task to do. And, and then reporting out to those monthly meetings of the subcommittees. So the first would be again, to review your action plan against a strategic plan of the county. Developing a memorandum of understanding with the partners. And I have a, I have the steps that you can take to doing something like that. Revising the continuum of care, or at least looking at how the continuum of care is currently modeled. And we can look at what other communities are doing, what other successful continuums are doing and how they're set up and how their meetings are set up and structured. And perhaps they, they could be more productive for everyone. Developing a training schedule of best practices. And again, in the recommendations, I have a list of things you may want to consider in terms of those best practices. Once again, remember, it's really important to have our support services staff and our direct services staff trained and supported and supervised. Have a peer specialist program. So how do you include peers? How do you include them in your, not just again, in the voice? You want their voices heard in the work group, but you also want them as part of your team. I have seen that be successful and unsuccessful. So I think there's important points that can, that we need to look at when, when you're at that point of, of including peers on your case management team and your services teams. And then developing a community outreach plan, which I think maybe the county has already started debunking some of the stereotypes and myths around homelessness and supportive housing and what that means in communities and maybe trying to address some of the NIMBYism that might happen. And developing a landlord engagement plan. And I didn't mention landlords, but that, that they certainly can be someone that could be on, in your work group as well. And they certainly could help with that landlord engagement piece. So those are the six components of my second recommendation. And before I end, I just want to say I was mainly, as Jill pointed out, really concentrating on services and, and support services and keeping people housed. But we, you can't really have a strategy without a strategy around development of supportive housing as well. That's not my area at CSH, but I think Jill is in contact with people who, who that is their area. Every community, the most successful supportive housing in every community has a combination of what we call single site. So buildings that are supportive housing anywhere from probably 15 to 50, 50 is big, but units in a building, that would be what we would call single-site development. And then the scattered site development would be working with those private landlords, but really a combination of those two pieces of development of supportive housing is important in communities. And that's my recommendations.
Thanks, Terry. I, I did want to let Commissioners know, in addition to the folks that we have around the table, I've had added some few folks to the panel. Eddie Velez and Justin Guttenkopf with Burt Nash are in the panel. And then I'm hoping that we can, I know we'll have Jill Dudley with Independence, Inc. will be joining potentially and someone with Tenants to Homeowners. Tenants to Homeowners, I did want to highlight the, when Terry came and spent some time here in April, it was at Tenants to Homeowners Sunrise House Project where we were able to spend some time with some of the residents and really have a really great conversation about why this is so important to them and what that looks like. And you should have gotten an invitation to the Sunrise House Open House that's on Friday afternoon as well. And I really encourage you to go. It's a really tremendous project. And in a lot of ways, that project and tenants to homeowners willingness to experiment in a really risky, hard way with Sunrise House was in a lot of ways, the motivation to have this contract with the Corporation for Supportive Housing because it illustrated just how hard it is to provide supportive services to the most complex folks in this community and how we don't have a system, a supportive system to keep folks supported and housed. Because when tenants to homeowners got into that space, they're not experts at this. They're really good at providing the, the spaces and the supportive property management, but they need the collaborative partners that are subject matter experts at providing that case management, trauma-informed care. And there's been some successes and there, there's been more successes than there's been failures, but there's been a lot of failures at first, and it was really hard. And there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of frustrations. But I think on, on the whole, things are on the up and up, and this project with Corporation for Supportive Housing, I think, is going to get us in the right direction. I also wanted to say that, you know, when Terry talked about not having the, the spectrum of needs or the spectrum of spaces and available for folks, I think our friends at Burt Nash, Justin and Eddie can really talk about how, you know, the work that they do with transitions and bridges. They get a lot of folks that in a lot of ways are a catch-all. And then on the other end of the spectrum, you know, you look at a program like Artists Helping the Homeless that is, it's not a low-barrier program. It's got a pretty high, high bar for folks. There's a lot of rules that folks have to follow. But once they're engaged in the services at AHH, it does have the impact that we want it to have. But there's, we have some, and it, and it is our best example of peer-infused supportive housing in this community that we know is having impact. So I just wanted to have just a couple of highlights of what we know is working really well, but also opportunities of what's not working well and how we can improve on it before we open up for questions and stuff.
Terry, this Commissioner Kelly, thank you for sharing all this with us. I was interested in when it comes down to the specific services, if there was any place where we saw, boy, that's a service that we provide quite a bit in the community? Or this is something we couldn't provide at all? When Artists Helping the Homeless first came to Douglas County, it was because we didn't have anybody who was providing that service and couldn't find anybody to provide that service. And as we've put all these things into place, it's my guess is that in some way, we're overlapping services. So I'm just interested in, did you see places of overlap? And did you see areas of maybe drought or there's just nothing that, that we're able to provide?
I think in every community, you will have overlap, and overlap isn't bad. It's depending on what is needed in the community. So having a few people who do the same service could be a good thing because there, there could be a lot of individuals who need that specific service. I think, I think what may have been missing is what Jill was pointing out, and that is the very hardest-to-serve people. How to house them, how to keep them housed is, was a gap. It, it, when people get through a program that has a lot of restrictions and requirements, when they actually get through it, they do well, but you leave a lot of people behind who don't make it. And that would be, I think, the area in your, in the community that would probably need the, the, the biggest push and, and the biggest gap is, is in that particular piece.
Terry, this is Commissioner Willie. Earlier on, we've had a study about who, who is needing a supportive housing in our community, and one of the populations that was identified were seniors. Is that still a population that is, you know, infused in this conversation? Are we identifying partners that target that population also? We didn't spend a lot of time on that, that population of folks. It is a priority population in our strategic plan. But for this project, we really were initially focused on our chronically homeless population. Um, that's the, that's the community that is most lacking in um supported housing services, our chronically homeless population and folks that are exiting homelessness. That it's a, there's few and far between services for those folks.
Yeah, I think uh, I think there was an assessment done previous to me coming that highlighted the uh target populations that were most in need in your county. And you can certainly follow that. If you, if you're looking at resources and infusing resources, HUD does have a priority for those who are chronically homeless as and and they are also the most vulnerable, as as Jill said. And then there's also the reentry population. Many times there could also be some funding around that, too.
Terry, I'm sort of you know, one of the challenges I think that's not listed in here is that we have a lot of partners who have their own goals and missions and models. And we're trying to bring them together to work collaboratively. Is there any advantage to having, you know, an expectation that if you join the collaborative or or having some sort of leadership at the top? Who sort of says, this is the way we're going to organize? Because I can understand other boards saying, we're not going to do that. Or, you know, um, this is just something we deal with in a lot of our partner relationships. And have you seen that happen in other places? Do you have any thoughts on that type of organization?
I think that the stronger the leadership of the work group is, the better it will be. And where I think work groups and continuums of care flounder is when the leadership isn't strong, they're not champions. Maybe it's not their full-time job. And I've I've talked to Jill about this, too. There's lots of counties that this is a volunteer position and they're also doing their full-time job. So they're not really committed to it. So I think the leader does need to be a strong leader, a committed leader who will, who will really set the tone for what what everyone is there for. And then everyone needs to decide whether it's for them or not. But I I agree, I think we, I think you need a very strong leader that's going to set that tone.
And I think Commissioner Kelly, when you look at um one of uh the recommendations for uh recommendation number two, um, that MOU um that can be developed amongst the partners, that's really the opportunity that I'm looking to. Um, to have that shared agreement around, especially any projects that Douglas County has any support for. That this is, these are the common expectations of what the roles are, the responsibilities and um how it's all going to be integrated within um the continuum of care. That's that MOU project is what I'm probably most excited about.
I also think I'm sorry, I just wanted to say one thing, too. I think that resource, so so sometimes the problem is resources are limited. Everyone is competing for those very limited resources. Everyone has their little piece of the pie and they don't want to give it up. And they they're afraid that if they give up their little piece of the pie to join this collaborative for maybe even a a better or bigger impact community-wide, it might hurt them individually. So some of that's going to have to be dealt with and talked about in an honest way uh, because it's real and it's everywhere. It's not just in your community, it's everywhere. So getting past that is going to be really important.
And I think it's going to require us to like take a hard look at some really tough examples that we know that that's happened recently, where people have been housed and they've lost that housing because and they've lost it in a really dramatic way. Um, and I know that some of my colleagues have examples of that. Um, and you know, even somebody that unfortunately Terry and I spent some time with at Sunrise House that they lost their housing in a really dramatic way. Um, they were, and they were on the path to really having like a a strong future with um another um another unit that was available to them um through tenants to homeowners. So the the system did not, the system failed them in a lot of ways. So having a really hard conversations about where those failures occurred and how do we prevent them from happening in the future? That's going to be crucial for us to make progress in this space. Um, and and honestly, that's why folks end up staying in places like the Lawrence Community Shelter as long as they do. Because there is no place for them to go and experiment with being successful in a different environment um and experiment in a way that isn't just a a total disaster for their lives.
This Commissioner Reed and um, you know, to sort of respond to your question, Commissioner Kelly, and just the thread of this conversation. Um, well, Terry, you kind of um spoke to my line of thinking, which is, I mean, I think it really requires us to um ask our partners to lean into first, you know, uh humble and honest conversations, which I think is a practice that our partners um and and county um and city officials have been flexing their muscle around and are getting better at. Trust takes time to build um and um, but it's also about trying to shift from a scarcity mindset to an abundance mindset and acknowledging that each organization um can do, can have their own missions, can do their, have their own focus. Um, but if they're joining this work and they're a part of this work, that there are some sort of non-negotiable, non-negotiable foundational principles and shared praxis about um what each organization won't engage in doing, you know, in order to reduce harm across our community and to have some some shared values around fundamental beliefs around supportive housing, right? And that then across that spectrum, there's choices. That's a thread that stands out to me throughout this document, throughout all the conversations we've been having is that permanent supportive housing is about having a spectrum of choices and options available. And so what one program's eligibility or way of doing things, you know, might not fit for some people. Hopefully through this process, there's somebody else on the spectrum, another organization that has a program, a unit, an opportunity that is a better fit. And that, you know, having those foundational principles that are shared and those non-negotiables determined through what I think this process um, you know, provides the opportunity to helps hopefully lessen some of that, you know, fear of um, I don't know, maybe loss of identity for some organizations, um, it, you know, or or losing sight of what their core mission is. Um, I just think that there's a lot of power in figuring out some um foundational shared principles. And then it's okay for everybody to still have other ways of doing things and other practices internally. Um, if they aren't creating harm for people and throwing up unnecessary barriers for people to stay housed. So that's just my thoughts while we're having this conversation.
Well said.
I would, I would agree. Uh, I I think that conversation around resource development, like a shared conversation about that. Um, because I think a lot of funders really like to see strong um collaborations. Uh, and so instead of taking, making that be kind of a competition, but having a a discussion about what are opportunities that are available state and nationwide that could be pulled into our community? And then who would be responsible for kind of stewarding those for the best good of of the population? So I I think there's ways where people keep their mission and yet collaborate in meaningful ways and and maybe um for the benefit of the community dollars-wise, too.
Yeah.
I've got a question about something I highlighted on the the ideas from community partners. And so I guess this is just a question on the floor for for Dana, for Karu, for um Justin or Eddie or Jill or anybody else online that's been a part of this. I'm curious to hear thoughts about the um better use of COC and coordinated entry meetings and, you know, the cyclical review of of folks and the time it takes to keep reviewing the same folks um facing barriers. I I'm just curious to hear thoughts about any ideas for what might improve that process? Or is it just sort of a byproduct of the circumstances and lack of inventory at the moment? Which I know is a factor, but I guess I'm trying to determine, is it only that? Or are there other things that seem to be, you know, right in front of you barriers to to having these cyclical conversations about the same folks?
Well, I don't want to put them on the spot, but I think, um, you know, Eddie and Justin, I think, are best suited to um take a first crack at this because I think because inventory is such a challenge. A lot of the times when I listen to um coordinated entry each week or even case conferencing, it's it's trying to track folks down because they got a voucher. But also like, you know, some some hard conversations about is somebody a good fit for something that's available? And that's where, you know, transitions is an amazing resource for folks, but it's not for everybody. And um, I think that's where um the Burton Ash staff really get um put in a pickle sometimes um with the folks they take. But Sunrise House as well and Sunrise, and that's the tenants to homeowners project. Um, it's a great resource, but they've got to have the case management to go along with it. And so capacity for case management is also a thing um for coordinated entry to work um work well. Eddie or Justin, you got anything you can offer?
I mean, I guess I'd say, you know, there it is sort of, it's a combination of issues, right? Because we do have to really look at the the folks that can benefit, will benefit, will use the resources, you know, so that we don't use, you know, we don't lose a voucher in the community because somebody was just not a good fit for that space, not a good fit for that voucher. You know, that the lack of stock really does contribute to that. It is that scarcity mindset, it's just really hard to to manage at this point, you know? And then when we've got sort of the same folks on that list over and over again, you know, we're trying to get through this list, but it we're not having trouble tracking them down or they're in and out of jail, we're sort of just trying to do that. The basic work of tracking somebody down takes time. And, you know, that is just another resource that a lot of us don't have because we're busy kind of dealing with the other folks. You know, and so we were kind of painted into this corner where we just, it's it's repetition. It is where we're kind of spinning our wheels a lot of the time, you know, trying to help the same people. Um, and but none of us really wants to have the, you know, the prioritization conversation, right? Like who who deserves this more because we can track them down? You know, that's that's just a really hard place to come at this from.
Yeah, I feel that. Thanks, Eddie. I really appreciate your articulating that. And it's um, I, as I figured many things at once. And I presume that capacity is certainly a significant pressure point and just the amount of time that um, how quickly the time goes by before we're back in one of those meetings, trying to sort of have a status update and see if any, if we've moved the needle on things and um to, I mean, it's many cyclical things um and pressure points at once. So anyway, thanks, that's helpful. The other thing I just want to um point out that I'm excited about and that I think we um, I'm hopeful that maybe CSH and um and other e- experts can really support us with is the um development of a a more flushed out and and purposeful community-wide education campaign and or strategy. Um, and that I think all of this is so new and to to many people, right? Many partners are expanding services rapidly, the county. Um, and many partners have brought on significant new programs and and that's just going to keep coming, right? So it's fast growth. Um, and as was noted earlier by Terry, you know, the intensity of the issue is um significantly escalated in the past few years. And so that means that everybody is feeling it in big ways, no matter what sort of your your perspective or uh ex-direct experience with homelessness or struggling to stay housed is. So I think that that's a really important thing that um we have to be thinking intentionally about throughout this and figuring out how to have um more honest and and frank conversations that um really center caring for folks and how to provide access for all people in order to help de-escalate the crisis that that housing is creating. Yeah, all the crises that are connected, right? And that we know are pressuring each other. So I think I'm excited to see that highlighted here. I just wanted to highlight it again and say that I've, we really have to keep working at that and figure out um, how we talk about it in a way that empowers our community to be about community.
I see Jill Dudley raised her hand. Go ahead, Jill.
Thanks, Jill. I appreciate the conversation around case management and what's happening there. Um, just because resources, personnel resources are stretched so thin and so many individuals need so much in the community. So I I'm glad we're talking about that. And even though um, you know, people think of Independence Incorporated and providing services to people with um disabilities, we don't provide any case management services. That is not anywhere um in our service definitions. And and I think sometimes it's important to just know what all the community partners provide and what they can provide based on the type of funding they have. So for me, since I'm a federally funded Center for Independent Living in this community, um, if someone comes to us for services, they have to consider themselves a person with a disability. So if they come in and they say they don't consider themselves a person with a disability, they're not eligible for my services. And so I think sometimes um, depending on what different providers can provide and what their funding sources mandate as definition of service delivery, that is sometimes impacting services we can provide in the community that support this population.
I I guess I thank you for that. I I guess that was sort of where my my mind was going was I I understand that there are limitations there. Um, but you know, we all have to work together as a community to find a way to reduce those barriers. And you know, Douglas County's money shouldn't have any barriers there. That's not what we have. And and we have put significant dollars into into these supportive services over the past few years. And we've got to find a way to show a return on the, I, we keep saying we need more and more resources. We are putting a lot of resources to this. And so I I'm just thinking, you know, a- as some of our partners are here and you're hearing this, we've got to have tough discussions about is presenting that barrier, what's going to help us get there? Or is it continuing put up wall after wall and we see the same people over and over again?
Well, I wanted to preview a little bit what next steps would be. So um, you heard the recommendations. Um, Terry and and um, one of our colleagues are working on um, providing some follow-up information for us, um, giving us some estimates um for um, getting this work started in um the first quarter of 2024. We want to get some dates set so we can get it on folks' calendars. Um, and um, so we'll have some additional information to move forward there. Uh, the supportive housing work group is fully, has looked at this, these recommendations um over the last couple of months and are in agreement with everything that's in there um and um are committed to following up on it. Um, I would say also, you know, just because Bob's here, that, you know, this work is um really a great example of an overlap between the um behavioral health and the Safe and Affordable Housing Community Health Plan um that we've been working on the last five years. And I know that is going to continue to be a theme of those community health, the the next five-year community health plan. So just want to highlight that um there's some synergies with existing work and future work at a community-wide level as well. And then the last thing um is, um, I know I've shared this with some um of you before, but um in terms of being able to experiment um more intentionally with um the um hard, the hardest-to-serve population and truly um take utilizing a housing-first model. Um, the county did receive a HUD COC grant um for 2022. And I'm, I am working through the logistics of fixing some of the um requests that HUD made before I, we can get those grant funds. But um, we are going to be providing um, launching a supportive housing program for um with scattered site. Um, in scattered site um approach throughout the community, um, hiring a supportive housing program manager with the federal funds that we've been awarded. Um, and taking a shot at meeting the hardest-to-serve folks in our community, um utilizing those HUD dollars and see what we learn. Um, the county did uh a couple of years ago, receive a housing-first pilot grant from K-Dads. And I'd be lying if I said it was successful. It wasn't very successful. Um, it was successful with some It was successful with some exceptions. Our partner Family Promise was, has been incredibly successful with the Housing First Family sub, sub-project that they have. And this might be a nice opportunity for Dana to talk about what she knows works there. But with our chronically homeless, single adults, folks that, you know, with the exception of the work that Sunrise House has had ups and downs with, at a community level, we really struggled to find landlords that would be willing to work with us and to have that shared supportive housing framework to keep folks housed. We just weren't ready for it yet. So, but Dana, you want to just talk briefly about what's worked with Housing First for our families?
Yes, thank you Jill. So one of the unique things about this Housing First project is that there are families with children who have no options anymore in this, in the county or in the city without moving somewhere completely new. And so this gives folks a chance with required case management to, to stay housed and get some stability. And, and one of the things I think works is just building that relationship. And that's, takes time and it takes trust and it takes seeing the individuals and it takes allowing the folks in the program to have autonomy and agency. And that's one thing I don't hear us talk a lot about. We talk about how we have the solutions or we're coming, but in a family, mom, dad, they know what's right for their family. And so there might be obstacles and challenges involved in that, but helping facilitate their choices and their decisions through a case management team that includes lived and experienced people, I think that's what's made the difference. Merely seeing, listening, respecting and helping build relationships so people know they matter. That's, that's what we feel is the key to the success of it. And, and we've had all the families involved in that Housing First are still housed. Thank you.
That was a good articulation of empowerment versus enforcement of things. So thanks for that Dana.
I know identifying existing partners that are doing this work and also new partners is part of kind of the steps that were lined out. And I know we're talking about the chronically homeless population, but I, I'd like to let that morph into some of our, our other supportive housing needs because I think in terms of identifying new partners, maybe not starting them with the most difficult to house folks that really require a, a high level of, of training and understanding in their case management. And that's why I can, coming back to kind of that senior population, I think it's, it's easier for maybe some of our, you know, faith communities or other community organizations to step into a supportive housing space. If it's not, if it's not something that they see as like outside of kind of the mission that they already have. So I, I want those conversations to be still a part of it because the more people that we can, the, the people that are easier to house, the more we can keep them housed, the less we have a chronically homeless population that becomes more and more difficult for, for the trauma that they go through.
Yeah, I think the best example of that is our Housing Authority. They're tremendous at providing supportive services for our seniors and they're one of the leaders. And I think, but when, when they were one of the, for a long time, the Housing Authority was, they were the holdout on the last permanent supportive housing program that we had in this community and that was Hope House. And it just got too hard. The, the folks did not have the level of support that they needed across the full continuum. And so they, they slowly got out of that. But the scene, there's so much that can be learned, to your point, in terms of how they support seniors. We have some real strengths in our system.
And I would put BRAC and Baldwin in that group. They are independent living, but they, they do a lot of support community-wise for each other and the staff to the residents and with a, a little bit of additional help from other community partners that could be much stronger and maybe help some folks from falling through the cracks, even in a situation like that, that is officially independent, but also a lot of community support that comes with it.
Can I say something around that? Quickly?
Yeah, go for it.
So, yeah, so I think, I think what I would call maybe having a two-pronged approach is what you're talking about. So focusing on certainly the people who are homeless and chronically homeless is the most vulnerable population. But if you don't have that two-pronged approach, or if you don't widen your net, sometimes we call it, to, to address the people who will be homeless, then, you know, you, you're not actually decreasing the population. So taking it from both sides, I do think is smart. But I also think you need to be very intentional and strategic about identifying those individuals who maybe are leaving nursing homes or who are seniors or who are leaving jails and prisons and be really strategic about identifying who are the most vulnerable in that group so that you do make an impact on that. But I think having that kind of two-pronged approach is, is, is a good thing to keep in mind.
I ask another question that it's a, it's a reoccurring question that I hear from the community and I just kind of want to put it out to see how partners address it. But there's a real desire in the community to see that, that the largest amount of services are put to people that feel like they are connected, deeply connected to Douglas County. And I recognize that that is hard to ferret out on a population that is unhoused. How did those conversations occur and, and what, what are our thoughts on, on how we make progress on that?
That may be a longer conversation. We can certainly have that as a follow-up. I'd say that that's something, those are conversations that we've been having in the Emergency Shelter and Service Strategic Plan Work Group. But we know that our providers do that and when they see folks and, you know, Dana, what is, you get calls all day long. So, you know, maybe just take a minute and talk about how do you understand what roots or relationships folks have in the community or not?
Sure. And I get, every provider in town gets the same questions all the time. So the filter for us when we get calls and we get an average of, and it's been on the increase, but eight to 20 calls a week of new clients we haven't heard from before. And we keep track of all that in our database. But the first questions we ask immediately on the phone is, are they here? Because if they aren't here, we, we can't help them. We don't know Kansas City, we don't know Topeka. We know, we can look up on the, you know, we try to do a, a warm handoff best we can, but we don't know those communities. And with children, families, we serve only families. So they don't want to uplift and move unless they've got a certainty. So that's one thing, that's how we handle it. Most of the folks who call us are here. They're already, they're already our neighbors, they're already in the system, their school, their kids are already enrolled in school. Or if they're new to the area, they came here for a job that fell through or something like that. So we really don't see a lot of out-of-towners coming in for our services in that bulk of people calling in need of services to Family Promise.
I'll just say as somebody who works for another sheltering service provider, we have service areas and most organizations have a service area that's pretty specific. And so there's that filtering for anybody who, who were to call for services. I would also say, and it's just a personal opinion, personal statement, but we live in a, a country where people have freedom of movement and, and opportunities to go make their home, whatever that means to them, wherever they see opportunity.
But we know that there's, similar to this project of the, of the conversation with Terry and having that shared agreement around this framework, we have work to do across the continuum around, you know, for lack of a better word, a transient policy. Like we, we, what is our threshold for like, we can provide X number of days for folks to, you know, get some shelter, get, get safe, but then let's make a plan. What does that look like? A group of us went out to the Manhattan Emergency Shelter a couple of weeks ago from the Family Shelter Work Group. And that is what their policy is. They'll provide shelter for up to two to three days. But then they're making a plan and they're getting that person on their way. But if the individual has more established roots or a plan in the community or a network of supports or services, then that's when they have a larger, it's a lo, a larger, a, a longer stay. Topeka Rescue Mission, I know, has something similar based on the conversations we've had with our new city homeless initiatives director. So, but we've got to have shared agreement around that and what that looks like and have those common thresholds and articulate that to our community. Because more than anything, that conversation came up consistently with, in our community conversations. We've got to do a better job of documenting it and holding one another accountable, similar to supporting folks once they're housed.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure you all heard directly from Terry and heard these recommendations before we moved into operationalizing them. My friend Bob tells me we might have some, some grant funding to help support some of it. But I do believe in our supportive housing budget, that we've got capacity to help with that as well, to offset some of the training with some of this. But we're super excited to operationalize it and happy to have a chance to talk to you all about it today.
Thank you Jill, thank you Terry, and thanks Dana. Thank you, Karu, for being here. This will end our work session and we will convene again at 5:30.
Thank you everyone for the opportunity.